The Commission convened a public hearing last night, June 5th, focused on staff proposals to strengthen current provisions in the Fairfax County zoning ordinance for data centers. We heard from 50 speakers who spoke from a variety of perspectives, ranging from support for and opposition to centers, data centers, with the majority speaking on topics falling between, somewhere between these two opposite perspectives. Most recognized data centers as an economic opportunity for the community. Many spoke to concerns about the impacts that data centers could have on their neighborhood and families, the environment and energy resources. Others shared insights on how past impacts are now mitigated by new technologies, and still others represented homeowner associations and environmental organizations. So I want to commend all those who have participated in these deliberations for both the quality of your advocacy and the civility with which you conducted yourselves.
I had sent staff a question about the grandfathering issue. Can I go into that? The, pardon?
Yes, you can, but you're...
Pardon?
You know...
As a grandfather, I guess I can go into it, but...
The word, okay, what they're alluding to, I'm sorry.
I know what they're alluding to.
Okay, okay, all right.
I know what they're alluding to.
Okay.
Please, just go ahead.
Yeah, as I understand it, there are currently two cases that have been filed and that have been accepted. Is that correct? So there's two current cases, data center applications pending, is that correct?
So for in-process cases, these are in-process site plans that don't have a previous approval, and the previous approval could be rezoning, special exception, or a previous site plan approval. We count about four or five that are in process.
There's about four or five that are in process. And do we know how they may be affected by the proposed changes in the zoning ordinance?
I mean, some of the standards they could comply with, but certainly are not a current requirement. So for instance, the submission of a noise study, that wasn't required, so they haven't submitted that, but obviously they could do that. Building design standards, those come later with a building permit. Taking, so this is a very preliminary statement, but taking a look at the location and does it seem reasonable that perhaps they could meet the 200-foot setback from residential and the half a mile setback that's proposed from metro? It does appear that most of them could, but not all of them. And so if the planning commission were to change those setbacks within the advertised ranges, then that impacts the ability of some of them to meet the proposed amendment.
Okay. So if we did adopt something that had that impact, how does DPD proceed with those applications? Does the applicant have to figure out that the world is different? Or do we sit down with them and say, "Okay, this is what it looks like. This is if, you know, and you're going to have to change your application"?
Mr. Olafelder, Commissioner Olafelder, Leslie Johnson, zoning administrator. I think we have a little bit of the cart before the horse because adopting any kind of vesting or allowing a submission that's already been accepted and is in process to move forward as part of this amendment is a legislative action that would have to be taken by the, as a recommendation by the planning commission and an action by the board. As we have presented the amendment in the staff report, we're silent on that at this point in time.
That's, I understand that. I'm raising it because I think that that's something we want to consider, that we should perhaps go forward with the package to the board as a suggestion that they, there'd be a grandfathering provision in it, so that current applications that have been previously filed but haven't been concluded yet would have to fall under whatever new restrictions are approved for the zoning ordinance.
Right. And as you know, you know, we look at, the amendments are looked at on a case-by-case basis. You know, when we adopted the fees, we had some language in there about how we would treat, you know, applications that were coming through up until that date. So we, you know, we do have, the board has the ability to do that. And so I think that's something that the planning commission could consider.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Olafelder, Tracy Strunk.
Hi.
The, the applications that Carmen was speaking about are not actually under review in Department of Planning and Development.
I understand, I got that.
They're with LDS. However, if your question is, should, should there be a change to standards that impacted those, would staff sit down and talk, would LDS staff or whoever's reviewing the site plan talk through the applicants to make sure that they understood the impact? I believe the answer to that probably would be yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Strunk, if I could ask you, you used a few acronyms there, some, perhaps some terminology that the general public may not understand. Could you restate that with the general public in mind?
I apologize. Yes, site plan review is processed by our Department of Land Development Services. So when I said LDS, I meant Land Development Services. And I can't remember which other ones I used. I might've said DPD, which is Department of Planning and Development.
So from a maturity of applicant stand, is it, is, is at that point the applicant having gone through an extensive process of consideration, and then it gets to LDS, Land Development Services?
Not necessarily. It just depends on, not all applications are reviewed through Department of Planning and Development. If they're not an entitlement process, they wouldn't have come through our office. So a by right...
If it was by right...
Application is simply filed directly with, with Land Development Services as a site plan.
In terms of relative level of effort that the applicant has gone through, either by right or even through the entitlement process, I mean, what is the level of effort invested by the applicant to get through to the point of LDS review and perhaps even through LDS review?
Commissioner Olafelder, I think, you know, because what, I believe what you were talking about, I mean, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Nagelski-Eichner.
Proceed.
I'm losing track of who I'm talking to, who I'm talking to. I think, what I'm, what I think you're saying is that if they went through an entitlement process, I mean, that, that has a, that gives it a standing on its own, that they've gotten approval through an entitlement process. So, you know...
And that would be the commission consideration, recommendation, then through the board?
Correct. And so then the next step would be to file the site plan that allows for the construction of that, of that project. And as long as, so if in the intervening period, there was an amendment that changed something in the zoning ordinance, then I think, you know, we would probably look back at that entitlement and that approval, and that was what the board adopted. And depending on how the amendment was crafted, I mean, we'd have to look at that on a case-by-case basis to see whether there would be, you know, an application for that change or not, or were they allowed to go through under their approval. So I think that's the difficulty, is that each case has its own set of circumstances that we would have to look through to determine, you know, whether they could continue under the previous zoning ordinance or under the new provisions. And there's some, you know, I'm sure the attorneys that represent the applicants are also going to be looking at that, you know, the same way.
Yeah, sure.
If I might add, the four or five site plans that I referred to previously, those are by right site plans, which don't have a previous approval. So they don't have a previous rezoning or special exception, and they have been filed at different phases. So two of them have, were submitted, you know, maybe nine or more months ago, others more recently. So, you know, they've gone through, some have only gone through maybe one submission, others more so.
And is there a way to distinguish one from another, or one from four others, or three from one other? I mean, is there a way of kind of fashioning a legislative language that distinguishes the, those that are in the process?
Go ahead.
Well, I'm not sure to tell the truth if how easy that would be. I will say that two of the by right site plan applications have gotten to a workflow step that is called technical approval, so that's almost final approval. And then the others, I'm not sure if they've only had one submission, or if any of them have had two.
Okay.
So other, other than applications that had been filed for seeking a special exception because they wanted a larger size or something like that, these are going through a internal review to determine whether they meet the criteria.
Well, they're being reviewed as a by right development under the current provisions of the zoning ordinance.
Right.
And so the question, if that site plan is approved tomorrow, and they continue to diligently pursue that site plan, then they would more than likely be allowed to continue development under those provisions and under that site plan that they got approved. And so, you know, a lot of it may depend on, I mean, if you look at some of the old, some of previous approvals that we've done in the past, you know, we've said, okay, if you're, there've been some, and it's in, you know, you can look at through the zoning ordinance, if, if you file the application, it's in for review, it's been, you know, it's been accepted for review, and I'm talking about site plans, I'm putting the zoning cases aside. And, you know, you've gone through the submission, if you continue to pursue that, and then you could put criteria such as if you allow that approve, if you can finalize your approval and you get it within six months or 12 months, and you keep moving forward. I think what we're trying to avoid is the board, you know, the, the planning commission makes a recommendation today, and tomorrow, somebody files an application trying to get something in there before the board has an opportunity to act. And, you know, is it just to put their application in and they don't have any intention of pursuing it? Or is it something that they're, you know, they're going to pursue? So sometimes you would allow them to have that previous zoning ordinance requirement, but maybe you put a timeline at the back end that says, "You have to keep moving forward. We're not going, if it's, you know, two years later and you still haven't gotten your site plan approved, well, you don't meet those, those standards that the board or the planning commission may want to recommend, and therefore you have to go back and you're under the new, whatever the new ordinance is." Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's kind of up to what the planning commission may want to consider, and then the board would ultimately be the decider and, you know, adopt it as part of the approval of the amendment.
Okay. Is there any other amendment to the main motion that a commissioner wished to pursue? Commissioner Bennett?
So I am going to address, I think, the issue that we've been talking about this evening as far as asking questions about the legal non-conforming status of certain applications. Working on that, I'm working on that language. And so I'm actually, I'm not, I, I'm going to start with one motion, and then we'll see what happens, and then I may have another motion depending on what happens with that first motion, if that makes sense. Okay. So I further move that the planning commission recommend that Appendix 1, provisions relating to previous approvals, be updated to include the following language for the data centers zoning ordinance amendment. A, for all applications for subdivision plaits, site plans, and building permits submitted and accepted for review before the effective date of this amendment, the applicant owner is entitled to have the application review and approval based on the provisions of the zoning ordinance as amended prior to the effective date of the amendment. If, one, approval is granted within six months of the effective date of this amendment, two, the approval remains valid, and three, the uses, features, and structures are established or constructed in accordance with approved plans and permits. Required subsequent plan and permit submissions may be accepted and approvals may be granted consistent with those approvals. Revisions to such approvals may be approved if they do not aggravate conflicts with this amendment. Applicant owner may elect to have the above applications reviewed in their entirety under the provisions of this amendment. And B, for all applications for rezonings and related development plans, special exceptions, PRC plans, subdivision plaits, site plans, and building permits approved before the effective date of this amendment, the applicant owner may continue under their previous approval. Required subsequent plan and permit submissions may be accepted and new approvals may be granted consistent with those prior approvals. Revisions to such prior approvals may be approved if they do not aggravate conflicts with this amendment.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bennett and seconded by Commissioner Olafelder. Commissioner Bennett, would you like to explain this?
So this amendment would allow for the applications that have been previously submitted, accepted, and also, and approved. As, again, we've had some, a lot of conversation about some of the interests that, you know, have already gone into some of these applications.
And so the, well, questions, comments?
I have a question.
Commissioner Cortina?
Are you sure about that approved part? Because I'm reading A, and it says, "For all applications for subdivision plaits, site plans, and building permits submitted and accepted for review before the effective date of this amendment." Not approved. The approval would have to be within six months of the effective date of the amendment. So this essentially grants them the ability to continue with a site plan that has been submitted in which they don't have a vested interest? Is that correct?
When you say vested interest, what does that mean?
They don't have an approval.
Oh.
I think the, the previously approved applications are covered under B that she read.
Right, but I'm asking about A. So A would allow an application that has been submitted for a site plan review that has not been approved yet to continue under the old regulations?
Exactly, provided that it is approved within six months.
Within six months, okay. I'm not in favor of this amendment. And I think I would like to substitute an amendment.
You, you can certainly move to substitute.
I substitute this amendment to say, for all applications... For rezonings and related development plans and special exceptions, site plans and building permits approved before the effective date of this amendment, the applicant owner may continue under their previous approval. Required subsequent plan and permit submissions may be accepted and new approvals may be granted consistent with those prior approvals. Revisions to such prior approvals may be approved if they do not aggravate conflicts with this amendment.
Is there a second? Been moved by Commissioner Cortina and seconded by Commissioner Hancock to substitute this motion for Commissioner Bennett's motion. Is there any comment or clarification or explanation?
This motion would effectively implement at the time of adoption of the board of supervisors, these provisions that have been amended to the zoning ordinance, and any applications that are in process would then be subject to those provisions.
To the new ones.
To the new ones.
And, but what this does is that if somebody...
Commissioner Olafelder?
I'm sorry. If somebody has a site plan that's gone through, that's been going through review, but it hasn't been finally approved yet, they would have to meet the new requirements as well.
They would have to meet the new requirements. If they had their site plan approved between now and the time that the board approves the new zoning ordinance, then those approvals are vested. They've, they've gained those approvals, but until that time of approval, they don't have those rights.
The, if I could seek further clarification, so under the motion made by Commissioner Bennett that you're seeking to replace, the, the approval or the approvals could be for exception and approved app, in other words, the reversion could be for those that are simply accepted. Is that the, I mean, what, there's an A and B for the, this motion, the original motion, and the A is for applications that are accepted, and B is for applications that are approved?
Well, again, originally I was putting this first.
Right.
And allowing us to vote on it.
I'm just trying to see what the distinction...
And if this didn't, then to go through what, with what Commissioner Cortina suggested.
It's, from, from, rules, it's either way works, so, and the substitution has been moved, so we're on the substitution at this point. But I, given the substitution, since it's a substitution of your motion, it's, I think, important for us to understand what the difference is between the substitute that's been proposed by Commissioner Cortina and the original motion. So maybe Commissioner Cortina, you could elaborate on the difference between your motion, your substitute motion and that of Commissioner Bennett?
Well, as I understand it from staff, unless there's a clarification to be made, we're talking about site plans that have been submitted but not approved. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's the essence of the difference, is whether someone who has submitted an application, whether it is complete or not complete, whether that continues along under the old ordinance, or whether it's now subject. I mean, I, my understanding all along in this process has been that we had to act with immediacy because data center applications are coming in, and we want them to be subject to these new regulations. And that, that is why I'm putting forward this substitute motion.
Commissioner Wang?
So just to clarify that I'm understanding this correctly, so for the four or five applications that have been submitted and are pending, so we're saying if they're not approved by the time the board of supervisors, you know, votes on this, that they would then have to go through the new provisions?
They would be subject to the new provisions. They would still have their site plan in, but they would be subject to the zoning ordinance as it's approved by the board of supervisors, with whatever setbacks, enclosures, et cetera, would be required.
So they have to go, so they have to go through their application...
Commissioner Olafelder?
I'm sorry. They have to go through their application based on whatever the board finally agrees to in terms of changes to the zoning ordinance, and determine whether their original application was consistent or not with what the board has approved, and if it isn't, they're going to have to make changes in order to proceed.
Correct.
Commissioner Spain?
So, just from my own understanding, so that means that if it has been accepted, then it's not formally approved, but then they're going to have to go back through the very beginning stages and do it all over again? There is no time limit that is going to be used as a guide to say, if you've submitted your plan by blah, 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 X, Y, Z time, then, because it's still not going to be approved if it doesn't meet the, and this is for by right or this for everyone? That's what I don't get.
This is, go ahead.
Well, the substitute, as I understand it, the substitute motion made by Mary Cortino applies to rezoning site, rezoning special exceptions, site plans that are approved. So they have to have approval in order to be exempt from the new zoning ordinance amendment regulations, whatever ends up getting adopted by the board. And so what would typically, I think, happen, kind of what Commissioner Olafelder talked about, is that if they could meet the 200-foot setback, they could just submit a revision of their site plan for processing to make whatever change they needed to make in order to meet the ordinance, and if they can't, then they have, they'll have to go through the special exception process.
Correct.
And this is specific, again, to by right situations?
It includes by right and applications that were rezonings and whatever that were previously approved, too.
So, so for, let's say a...
But there aren't any, there aren't any, currently, we don't have any pending zoning applications, but it just gives people that, like Chantilly Premier, who was approved with a special exception back in January, I believe, you know, this is applicable to them. They don't, they've got their approval. They would not be subject to the new provisions.
Correct. They already have their vested rights.
Correct.
They, they already have their approvals.
Approval, correct.
So this language that I've substituted does not apply to them.
Correct.
It only applies to the ones that are in, that have not been approved.
Correct.
So the, there's no, nothing in the rezon, nothing in a request for rezoning pipeline that would be affected by this?
That's correct. And also, there's, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that is under consideration now that would change for a special, an application that was in to file for a special exception would still be in to file for a special exception under the new regulations. So there's nothing, there's nothing that would have impacted any case that was a zoning case that was, that was before you.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Commissioner Wang and then Commissioner Spain?
So the four or five applications that are pending, they're all by right, right? So if they were to fall under the new provisions, whatever goes through...
The substitute motion?
Right. Would any of those then fall under special exception standards, or they would still be by right? I guess that depends on the specifics of the project, which I don't know, but I don't know if you have that information.
So I took, as I said earlier, I took a very preliminary look, and, you know, it seems that some of them could meet the new standards if, depending on, you know, and I haven't, like, maybe re-looked at it, given the revision to that standard four with the residential setback, but it seems that some of them probably could meet the, with the amendment, and others may not.
I was following on with what Commissioner Wang already asked, if these were by right. For those who are not by right, then it would definitely affect them to go all the way back to the beginning if we were to take on the substitute motion. Yes?
So there aren't any zoning cases in the pipeline right now? So it really, this really, we're really talking, the universe really is this four or five, and whether they would be able to continue along as by right applications, or whether they would need to apply for a special exception?
Okay, but it's dependent upon this motion that we're getting ready to vote on. Yes?
Yes.
One other question, and don't know, we don't have Land Development Services here, but the, the difference... but the difference between these two motions is the original motion, not the substitute, but the original, would allow for applications who were, that had been accepted, or, yeah, had been accepted. And so that acceptance is, is, that's a simple matter of submitting drawings? I mean, what does, what is, so a site plan is submitted and that's accepted, and then it goes through a review process?
Yes, so they are submitted, and they do go through an initial kind of quality check to make sure that they are, before they're quote, "accepted for review," and then after they undergo that, then they are distributed for review, and that's when the clock starts. So then that's their first submission review. So "accepted" is just that initial check to make sure that they have all of the components required for review, not that it meets the standards. Then that's part of the actual review. And then they have that initial review, they get comments, and then they have to revise it and resubmit.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, we'll move to vote on the substitute motion. The substitute motion was as read by Commissioner Bennett. It's before, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cortina. It's before us. It's been seconded by Commissioners Hancock and Wang. And all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? That substitute is approved. It then becomes the, the proposed amendment to the main motion, so we're going to have to vote on it once again, because it's now the motion to amend the main motion. So all those in favor of this, to amend the main motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? So it now is approved as an amendment to the main motion.
Commissioner, can I, I need to add that I do not, I'm not going for the substitution.
Okay.
Just please make that on the record.
Is there anyone else that wished to be designated as a nay? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so what we have is then the main motion that has been amended. The main motion was to basically accept staff's recommendation with option one, but that then is amended with the, the motion about the 200-foot, 500-foot, based on placement of the equipment. The mile is an alternative to the one half-mile from the metro. The retroactive or the overarching, or the approved applications being eligible for, under the current zoning ordinance as opposed to the new zoning ordinance. So those are, that's the overall motion, so we have to act then on the overall motion as amended. So all those in favor of the motion, main motion as amended, signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Olafelder?
Will we make some remarks before we vote?
Yes, please. I should, I should have allowed for discussion. Yes, please.
I'm going to vote for this, but I want to remind the commissioners, it's clear that we're going to have somebody unhappy with what we're doing, one way or the other. This is a, this is one of those situations where there are strong feelings and positions on both sides. And I've been, this is my 10th year on the Planning Commission, and I've been through some of these, and it's important, and I think we've tried to explain as best we can what we're doing and why we're doing it. And I think that's important. People, it's not just what you vote for, it's why you voted for it, and to let people know what you think is right in each case. I remember my first couple of years on the commission, I got involved in a couple of cases that upset some people in Great Falls. And if you recall back, the former chairman of, chairwoman of the board, Ms. Bulva, had set up a task force to come in with and have discussions and give her some ideas as to how the land use process and so on should go, and what might be improved and so on. And I recall that somebody from Great Falls, who was a member of that task force, when they were asked for discussion and comments, said, "What is the procedure we need to follow to recall our planning commissioners?" And they had to be reminded that the planning commissioners are independently appointed by the board for four-year terms, and they can only be taken off their job if they commit malfeasance in office. That would be taking something of value for your vote, for example, or if you are excessively absent. And that they are independent, and that they have a right to their independent voice. And we, we guard that jealously, and it's important for us and for the supervisors that we have that independence, and that we have, we have to make some tough choices, and it doesn't make everybody happy. But come tomorrow, we'll all still be here.
Commissioner Cortina?
Thank you, Chairman. I have a few remarks as well.
Please.
I'll try to be brief, but the zoning ordinance and this amendment are intentional in directing data centers to the most appropriate zoning districts in the county. This amendment does not convert rural, crescent, open space, or residential areas to make way for data centers. Data centers are allowed only in certain commercial and industrial districts, and are proposed to be removed from the, well, proposed and recommended to the board to be removed from the PRC Town Center and Convention Conference Center areas. In addition, it's proposed that the data centers not be located within the core metro transit areas where the county has planned the transit-oriented development. The zoning ordinance amendment is clearly written. It provides additional standards that are intended to mitigate potential impacts of the data center in the districts where they are already permitted to be located. And there are several environmental issues that were identified in the staff research paper, and I do believe that those have been addressed adequately in standards that we have elsewhere in the county. And the Water Authority, as well as the Department of Public Works and Environmental Services, and the wastewater ordinance will monitor the water. The air quality is regulated by the Department of Environmental Quality at the state level. The fuel facilities, as we've heard, are regulated federally and locally. And the smaller tanks that we were worried about have the double hulls, and the fire marshal is not concerned about those. Finally, the elephant in the room here in terms of energy usage. The Virginia Energy Conservation Code will require the new data centers to comply with the ASHRA 90.4 Energy Standard for Data Centers. And so the data center will be treated like any other commercial building for its shell, but it will not address the energy demand and the enormous energy demands of the equipment that's inside of this, or the cooling and other energy demands that are as a use, as a byproduct of this use, or as the reason for the use. But the broader issue is really with the power grid and transitioning to clean energy to meet the climate goals. And the data center energy use is not capped, nor could we deny a data center during a special exception process based on its energy usage. While it would be advantageous to have commitments for greater energy efficiency, for lead certification, the zoning ordinance does not include regulations for energy use and efficiency, and an SE for that purpose alone is not supported by the SE requirements. So with that, I think for the zoning changes that are recommended, these do address and mitigate the issues that we have before us that the zoning ordinance can work toward, and it does support the comprehensive plan in moving these uses and confirming that these uses belong in the appropriate district. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Wang, and then Commissioner Spain?
Yeah, I wanted to echo what Commissioner Olafelder said earlier, just, you know, our job is to listen to all the voices, different interests, and try to balance everything to see what's best for the county. So I think this is our attempt to do that. Yesterday, we heard from folks on this side and on the other side, and our job is to find something that balances, you know, the economic benefits of data centers, the job growth that they can help produce, as well as the quality of life issues that residents have raised. So I'm happy with where we've landed. I think we've done a good job balancing all those voices.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Spain?
I have a question. So just on clarification, when we get ready to vote, so I did not vote for the substitute motion. So when we vote, are we voting on everything together? So I'm either a yes or no?
It's a choice for you to make. If the addition of the substitute motion was, is significant enough for you to be opposed to the main motion as amended, you can vote nay. But if the overall main motion, as it was amended, even with the substitute motion on, you'll have to make that decision.
Okay.
On all the other matters, I support the changes that were made. I also find that when Commissioner Bennett makes the main motion, it masks the tremendous amount of effort that she put into kind of corralling the cats, and getting us all kind of thinking through what are the matters that are most important to us, and she reflected in her motion and her work on this, I think, very effectively, the ability to, you know, kind of have that consensus point of view, obviously, by the types of votes we've been having. So I commend Commissioner Bennett for that. All those in favor of the main motion as it has been amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries.